You don't know nothing about sound.
And she put some notes up here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Is that going up or down?
I don't know.
Which way is it going now, ain't it? Oh, I hit the wrong button. See, I can't see. There you go.
Okay.
We're max.
Okay, we'll have the invocation by Councilman Chamberlain and the pledge allegiance by Councilman Newman.
Shall we stand?
Father, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for this day that you have created. Be with us as we discuss issues and matters pertaining to our city and the people that we represent. Be with those that may be on their way. Be with those that may not be able to make it today. Be with our servicemen as they represent our country and the fight for our freedom. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's why I didn't have it all ready.
Yep.
I'll have the roll. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Here.
Councilman Willis?
Here.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Present.
Councilman Ices?
Present.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Here.
Councilwoman Davis?
Here.
President Jones?
We'll have the minutes from the regular meeting and the special meeting.
Madam President, I make a motion to the council that we approve the minutes for the May 8th and the May 27th meeting.
Second.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protim Davis?
Here.
Communications?
Greg Wingclerk should address the council.
Council, Council President Davis, members of the council, you have in front of you the updated economic development report. You will notice there are a couple new projects on there. I've got additional information to offer you if you want a briefing regarding what we're doing at Purdue University College of Technology, as well as the other project that's listed on there with TWI, which is a 3D printing company. So we'll be glad to get you into talk with those folks if you want additional information. Any questions regarding the numbers that you have in front of you? Thank you.
Thank you. I will now ask Board of Works Chairman Pete to come forward.
Good evening, council. Madam President Protim. Pete, you're Chairman of the Board of Public Works. If you would entertain just for a moment, I'd like to introduce our controller for a few moments to introduce our deputy controller, our new deputy controller. So if Jason Fenwick would come up, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a quick second to introduce a new member of our team to you folks, Mr. Jason Streeter. He joined us about three and a half weeks ago as deputy controller. He came to us most recently from Ivy Tech where he had been teaching accounting. He's very strong in the accounting area and has very strong analytical skills, which we're looking, very much looking forward to in our office. He has an MBA in accounting from Indiana Wesleyan, so he's a welcome addition to our staff and I wanted to introduce him to you guys tonight.
Welcome. Okay.
Thank you. Welcome, Jason.
No more than 10 minutes.
I will now ask, there was, I see in the audience, the gentleman that owns a pawn shop. Russ, did you folks have that meeting?
I wasn't involved in any meeting.
I wasn't invited.
Who was, who was the members of that that was supposed to meet with the chief?
Councilman Willis, Councilman Dixon, and Councilman Ices.
Councilman Dixon, did you meet with the chief about the pawn shop?
No, I didn't.
Did you, Councilman Ices?
No, ma'am.
I was informed that the, I believe the entire front office of the APD met with the pawn owners, but the council members that were mentioned by President Jones were excluded.
How would you gentlemen like to handle this?
Well, I've asked the clerk to contact the front office of the police department and ask them if they would like to participate in that meeting with the three council people, or if they would rather us just do that ourselves. And then if there's an amendment to be made, then they foregone their opportunity to voice their opinions at that point in time.
And I tried to get ahold of Jerry Miller today and did not reach him. So I left him a voicemail. I know, you're gonna try that. Can we have something by next meeting? Folks? I sure hope so. I can't, I can't speak for everybody else. Okay, I would like to have a report on this issue by the next council meeting, regular meeting. Okay, would you like to speak more?
I'll put my deputy on it tomorrow.
Yes, go ahead.
I had one other item of communications.
Okay.
Please. It was brought to my attention that there's an ordinance that I need to report to the council per the ordinance on the Animal Protection League as Board of Works Chairman. So I've just got a short prepared statement to inform the council. The Animal Protection League has been operating the animal shelter portion of animal care and control pursuant to an agreement that was entered into in 2011. The agreement expired in March, and upon expiration of that agreement, the Board of Public Safety issued a request for proposals. The Animal Protection League submitted the only proposal pursuant to ordinance 8-10. The Board of Public Works is supposed to report to the council the results of the proposals and request the council to take additional action if necessary. No additional action is necessary as the Animal Protection League was the only one to submit a proposal. The Board of Public Safety is negotiating the exact terms of the contract and is preparing to award the contract to the Animal Protection League at their next meeting.
Any council member wish to address this issue?
Madam President, you're saying it's ordinance 8-10 requires?
Hmm.
I'm confused because...
I can do that. There is ordinance 8-10. It was passed by the common council in front of me in February of 2010, and it requires in section two that the Board of Public Works report to the council regarding this.
My understanding of that ordinance, maybe Mr. Land wants to come forward. When that ordinance was presented to the council, that was at the time that that administration was considering privatizing or whatever you want to call the animal shelter. And that was a document that was prepared for us to get permission to look at the possibilities of it, not to bring back before us.
What?
This council actually voted not to do that.
Well, the, the ordinance does say that, I think the ordinance was drafted at the time when we were looking at doing exactly what you said in terms of, you know, the operations of the, of the animal shelter. And so the ordinance, as passed, did say that when there was an award made, that there would be a report made back to the council in terms of, you know, what, what the bids were that were received, et cetera. I do think that was intended at that time to address that particular situation. But when the contract was awarded, it must have been for a four-year term, five-year term? Three-year term, three-year term. And so the terms expired. So the city, I think, in a sort of an abundance of caution, has gone through the process, receiving requests for proposals again, and just reporting back to the council what's happened there. I think you're right, because the state statute would say that the Board, the Board of Public Safety would have jurisdiction over this matter. So it's really, I think, in the ordinance more of a courtesy to the council that the council know what is going on.
But are you saying every time a contract or RFP is advertised, then you'll have to bring that result back to the council?
No, it was just this particular, this particular issue for animal care and controls. An ordinance passed in 2010, and it's not very clear, because it just specifically says that you report to the council on the submitted proposals.
The ambiguity is, this was done at the threshold of doing this, the first time we ever did it. The ordinance is still there. So I think the question came up, well, what do we do when it comes time to renew the contract? And do you, you know, go through the process again? And they did. They decided to go through and seek proposals. It turned out the only proposal that was, you know, turned in was by the current operator. So it's a little bit of a mood issue. But, and if the council really doesn't want to have this done in the future, we can repeal that provision, and we'll take, we'll take steps to do that. So it won't have to happen in the future.
I'd be open to that.
Okay.
I was under the impression it was for that one particular initial process.
Well, that may be true, but the ordinance as written was a little ambiguous, and of course, it was not repealed, so, you know, it's still there now when it comes time to renew the contract. But we can certainly pass an ordinance to repeal that provision in the ordinance.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I got a question for the chief of police.
Yes, sir.
Since we talked about that pawn shop ordinance, how many other break-in have you had other than mine? I mean...
Mr. Dixon, I would have prepared for that question today. As far as the statistics and burglaries and such, sir.
Yeah, the chief, they came out and investigated. I had someone at the top of my diner and cut all the copper away from around two of my air conditioners. They took about $20 worth of copper, and I got estimates for $6,000 to repair my air conditioners. Something's gotta be done about it.
Madam President, can I make a comment about the, the meeting that you've, that we've questioned here?
Yes, if you would, please.
Unbeknownst about the controversy about what President Jones said about said meeting, I don't know what that really means. It's not to inhibit the city council for meeting privately with vendors or businesses. The intent of that so-called meeting was an exploratory meeting after the ordinance was passed to go in and discuss and review the ordinance itself. It's an exploratory meeting. It wasn't anything to be excluding city council. It didn't exclude anybody. If the city council says, "I want to be at every meeting," then say it. We'll be glad to honor that. Four people at a meeting, I'm not going to violate any laws with open door policy. I've been down that road, we're not going to do it again. I'm not here to argue or debate about city council and how many members and the dates and times and places. We're not either. I don't. But this, this first meeting was an exploratory meeting to go through discussion and entertain questions and bring information back to the city council. That was all.
Now, can we set something up?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be glad to. We got some information for the council based on response from, from the businesses and such.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, let me explain to you what this council person took from that meeting. At a council meeting, I had a citizen, a business owner, approach this council and asked to talk to the council about amending an ordinance that no one had taken any input from them. The council president at that time asked the members of the front office of the APD to sit down with three members that she specifically asked to sit down with those people, and then sit down with them to hear their concerns so that we could determine whether we would need to amend an ordinance or whether we should leave it as is. That's what was actually, I mean, they didn't come to...
The first comment...
Let me finish, please. They came to a council meeting requesting council people's help. They didn't come to Anderson Police Department and ask, I mean, I think they did that already, and they didn't get any satisfaction.
Have you helped them then, Mr. Dixon?
I've met with them. You met with them. I didn't. I wasn't involved in that.
I'm not gonna stop you, sir, but you made a comment that the entire front office met with these people. The entire front office was not there. But, but to debate this all day long, I'm not here to do that. This was exploratory meetings, council, that was all it was, to bring back information of what they may have concerns with. It wasn't to exclude the council by no means. And I don't know who President Jones told that to. I don't recall her telling the chief of police that thou shall be a meeting involving city council.
I just remember her making the nominations. I don't remember...
Was I standing at the podium, Ms. Davis?
I don't know if you were even here.
Okay, because I don't, I don't, I was told that they're going back to the minutes of the last council meeting, and that's appropriate if you see need be, need be it. But I wasn't here, and she didn't direct it toward me. She may have said it in the conversation. I don't know.
Well, our last council meeting was a, woo, a real bad one, but it had nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
But I do specifically remember her setting a committee. And I didn't know for sure who was on that committee, because I knew I wasn't. But I remember Russ being on it, and I believe Ollie was on it, and David said he was on it, so...
And that could still exist today.
Yeah, that's yesterday's news. So let's go forward and meet between now and July's meeting.
Do you want to set that up, chief?
Sir?
Do you want to set that up?
I will have to go in through...
Just get it.
Part of the problematic thing, too, with all due respect to the, to the vendors involved, is their schedules as well. And having city council not violating the open door laws and trying to get with Sheila and her staff about arrangement of all these schedules.
Well, there's only three of them meeting, so there's no violation.
It would be a violation of open door law if you had serial meetings, but we can make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay. Well, let you set that up, Sheila, and make sure that each council member is informed. And we'll go ahead and go with Russ and Ollie and David, if you don't mind. Okay? Ollie, are you with us?
Always. What do you want?
You want to meet with him?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure that happens.
I was not aware you had a robbery, Ollie. I did not know that happened. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, thank you.
I think I'm okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on with the meeting and go with...
In the last two weeks.
Our first ordinance. Ollie, you're in charge of that.
Okay, President Davis, I want to remove ordinance 15-14 off the table.
I second that.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protim Davis?
Yes.
President Davis, I'd like to give ordinance 15-14 his third and final reading.
Madam President, I second that, please.
Ordinance 15-14 and ordinance amending ordinance number 1141, ordinance number 2439 of the City of Anderson's Code of Ordinances, Madison County, Indiana, with respect to a change of zone map as to certain real estate within the city of Anderson as herein particularly described. Frank Owens?
Madam President, members of the council, good to be with you this evening. For you is the 1803 Broadway before you this evening. And you have packets, I believe, with the picture of the property in the packet. And also you can see an area around the packet, excuse me, the property. Get this up here a little higher. The folks are here tonight, the owners of the property are present this evening to answer any questions about the business. Did a little research a little further. There are, to the west and to the southwest, the properties are all I-1. I think there was a question about why we were seeking I-1. It is contiguous to actually the properties on the other side of Silver Street there. And to the south, it's I-1. And to the northwest, it's I-1. And if you have any questions for the own, the folks that...
Yes, if they would like to come forward.
Madam President?
Yes.
Councilman Jim Sargent, 32 Linden Lane, Anderson.
And what is that you're wanting to put in there?
We're looking to put in a banquet event center there.
Oh, okay.
It's called Reflections.
Okay. Any council member have a question for the gentleman? If not...
Call for the question.
Call for the question, but question then call.
Councilman Papella?
No.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Ices?
No.
President Protim Davis?
Yes.
Ordinance 15-14 has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We'll now have introduction of ordinances.
Madam President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 14-14 for its first reading, please.
Second.
Ordinance 14-14 and ordinance of the City of Anderson, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of rates and charges for services rendered and new schedule and new general terms and conditions for electric service by Anderson Municipal Light and Power.
Good evening, council.
Madam President, excuse me? Yes, please. Here before you tonight to kind of do a little refresher on why we're here tonight. If, if you remember here about December of 2013, I think it was about that timeframe, we... 2012, okay, my goodness. About 2012. It's been a long time. We came to you requesting to do a rate case for the electric utility. It was an IURC mandate that we also do a cost of service study with that rate case to study our rates, and to also make sure that the classes of customers are experiencing or are equitably paying for those expenses that the revenues offset. That was the cost of service part. So what we did is we came before you. We did get approval to go to a 50% level of cost of service or halfway toward making those expenses equitable amongst all the classes. And then we did ask for a revenue increase of about 2.69%. So it was very small. We're here tonight because we have, then, after we have approved it here at the city, we've gone down to Indianapolis to the IURC, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, and they have reviewed our rate request and made sure that it was equitable to the customers. Having done that, we are now back before you because we have some good news. We have actually, through the IURC rate case and through the efforts of our staff and our legal counsel and financial counsel, been able to come back to you with yet a little more of a decrease. It's very close to what we presented, but yet it's a revenue decrease. Now, keep in mind, we've also still had that IURC mandated cost of service study that we had to do. So when we realign the classes, combine that with the revenue reduction, that's what Kyle's going to come up here and explain to your satisfaction so that tonight we can get this realigned. And what it is, is we're going to ask that we mirror what the IURC has come back and suggested, you know, mandated, or Kyle, he's the legal guy. He'll tell us why they do that. So I'm asking you to pass the ordinance. It mirrors exactly what the IURC has before us. And I'd also ask, if you would, please entertain three readings. I'm sure Kyle will explain it to your satisfaction. Mr. Huffer?
Good evening, council. Kyle Huffer, Law Firm of Frost Brown Todd. I'll try not to repeat too much of what Pete said, but I think it is important to walk through the steps that we've been through so that you're comfortable with the final decision really of the process tonight. In late 2012, you'll recall, we had two separate council meetings and a public hearing to discuss an increase in the, the electric rates. At the time we came to you, we requested based on a 2011 test year. So we looked at what were the revenue requirements in 2011 to meet the expenses of the utility going forward. At that point in time, the first aspect of the rate case was a 2.69% increase in overall rates to meet that expense requirement. The second part of the ordinance was a cost of service study. We brought to you a range of options with cost of service and decided that we would take to the IURC going to 50% cost of service, meaning that a certain jump needed to be made for, in this case, residential customers to be paying their fair share of costs. And instead of going 100%, we decided with the council that we would only go halfway there, 50%. After filing and starting the process with the IURC, we were required to update our test year to 2012, which we did. And the good news from that is that the expenses and the management of the utility during the period of 2012 had reduced the costs and thus the revenue requirement for the utility. Based upon that, there was updated testimony filed with the IURC. And at the end of the day, instead of a 2.69% increase in rates and revenue for the utility, we actually are coming to you tonight with a 0.27% decrease in electric rates. A very rare occurrence and something that I think that the city should be very proud of, that the utility has been managed. Keep in mind that the last time a rate case was conducted was in 2008. So for a period of, since 2008 till today, we have actually maintained electric rates for the citizens of Anderson. I think quite an accomplishment for the management and the administration of the city. The other piece remains the same. We're going, doing a 50% cost of service adjustment. And thus, the rates and the parameters that we discussed with you all the way back in 2012 are virtually identical to what you have passed, but because the statutes require the council and the IURC to pass identical rates, we're back here tonight to ratify that administrative action. Any questions?
Any council member have a question? Anyone in the audience wish to address this issue?
Yes, I do.
Please come forward. Take your name and address. We don't know who you are, Rob.
Nice to see you too, Donna.
Ah.
Yeah, my name is Robert Jowswak, 815 Rabel Avenue, Anderson, Indiana. Now, the first thing I want to say, are we still tape recording these and broadcasting this live?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay. I was just curious because, and I think that's a wonderful thing. I think it's great for the community to see, you know, what transpires here locally, and they can be abreast to people that can't attend. And everybody in the community knows what is going on with the city council and the city of Anderson. The one thing that does concern me is it appears from the broadcast and the feedback I'm getting from the community is that these broadcasts are being edited and certain information's being censored. And I really think that that is something that needs to be addressed. I think we need to push an ordinance so, you know, because it is, I mean, I don't know how it's funded, if it's taxpayer dollars or if it's utility money used to fund the broadcast, but I just think that it's somewhat...
Excuse me, Madam President, point of order has nothing to do with this ordinance, what you're talking about, Rob.
Okay, okay, I just, suggestion. I just want to make sure that that was said, because when I come up here, I don't like having things edited. I mean, I'd like to see the people in the community get everything verbatim that's said. I'm like, I just have some questions.
Ask your question if you would.
We had a 7.8% increase in the electric rate. That's what initially went through. Now, this 0.27% decrease, is this, we still have an increase of 7.8%? Or what exactly is it? Now we have a 7.5% increase? What is the overall increase that we have?
So, so as I, as I tried to explain, as we talked about previously, as far as the revenue and the rates of the utility, there will be a reduction of the total revenue collected by the utility of 0.27%. The IURC also mandated us to adjust for a cost of service study, how those rates are allocated among rate classes. So it really depends on who you are, whether you're an industrial customer, how much use you're having of electricity. Each of those balance out to result in a decrease in rates. But for instance, the average customer, I believe, is similar to what it was before, an increase of $4.79 on a $67 bill. If, for residential, if you are a industrial customer, there might be a decrease based upon your usage.
Any council member wish to talk about that? Okay, go ahead.
I'm still... My question is, is there a, is this a decrease in the increase? Or is this a decrease, because we had a 7.8% increase, so my...
Let me, let me try to explain it one more time. Last time, we did not have a 7... People, I think, got, got fixated on that 7% number because we often use that as an example as being the, maybe an average residential customer. But at the time we were here, we were asking for a 2.69% increase in revenue. So take all the revenue of the utility, we needed an additional 2.69%. One particular, you know, take any particular customer, and that could vary. Instead of that 2.69% increase, we are, we are here today for a 0.27% decrease, so roughly a 3% reduction from where we were before. Again, individual ratepayers could be up slightly, down slightly, depending on where they are based on the IURC mandated cost of service study. But just based on the revenue requirements of the utility, we are now at a 0.27% decrease as compared to a 2.69% increase when we were here in 2012.
Well, there's a lot of, in this ordinance, there's a lot here. I mean, there's one page of the ordinance, and there's 50 pages of information here, correct?
I didn't count them, Rob, but I'll take your word for it.
Okay. 44308, I mean, is this locally driven? Or is this state-driven through the IURC, what you've included in as example A and example B?
So if you look, it's not example, but it's an exhibit. So if you look, it's not example, but it's an exhibit. Exhibit A is the actual order, the actual tariff schedule published and approved by the IURC. So these are the rates and charges of the utility. When you get to exhibit B, these are the general terms and conditions of the utility which are just being republished, which are things like, how do you, if you have to do a payment plan, how does that work? And it's just pulled all that into one document and put that here as an attachment to the rate case, the rate ordinance. Exhibit A is exactly what was approved and it's even stamped down at the bottom. We use the actual one stamped by the IURC as its order.
My next question is, since we have, these examples or exhibits here, why didn't you include 44308, the final, the final, the final findings of the IURC or what they were implementing? Why was that not included as support for the one-page ordinance?
I mean, one is an order of the IURC getting to how they got to the rates. What this council has to approve is the actual rate schedule, which is what's attached.
My question is, the IURC had a final, their final findings, their final recommendations to you. It's not included here. I just want to know why you didn't include it.
I don't have a better answer than that.
John Skomp with Crowe Horwath. The IURC's final findings are the tariffs. They go through the order to calculate your revenues, they calculate your consumption and all the rest, and the order does a lot of, does a lot of things to describe the circumstances. And their final findings are the tariffs that are included here. And those tariffs are, they've already approved them based on all the findings they had in the case. There's no reason for us to put all the case evidence as part of your ordinance here. The commission's findings are in here and that is, their final findings is the ordinance that they've already approved. So it's in there, it's in there.
So John, are you saying it's too lengthy and cumbersome to include it and it would just confuse us?
Rob, I think we're going to move on on this. I mean, but anyone who wants to find it, you can go to the IURC's website. It's a public document.
Here it is. Here it is.
Yeah, see how easy it is to find? Rob can find it.
It's really easy to find. Not only Rob can find it, but so can your high-priced attorneys that you pay for. They should be able to find this and include it in a one-page ordinance. There's seven pages here and it basically explains everything in detail as to how you found, a lot of detail as to how you found your reduction. And I think it should have been included in this one-page ordinance. I mean, I just think that that would be thorough and professional. I mean, if we're going to spread good news, let's spread all the news. Let's spread everything.
Thank you, Rob.
No, I'm not, I mean, I don't know why you don't want me to explain what's in here. There's some pretty-
I think they explained it to-
I think they didn't explain it because they don't want you to know what's in here. I mean, I'd like to, all I want to do is I want to find out, I mean, we approved something for a 7.8% increase, now we're talking about a .27% decrease. I just want to make sure, you know, there's a lot of numbers here. Can we not run three reads tonight? Can we take a little more time to sit back so we can just understand all the information? That's all I'm asking. I mean, if you run three reads tonight, I mean, I can't even get through all the information that you've thrown at us. And it sounds like good news and I'm all for good news. If we can reduce rates for the citizens of Anderson, that's great, but we're also talking in here about the State Board of Accounts. It's also referenced in here and I'd like to know how that money is referenced because there are laws and it's, and I can't give you, you can make a copy of that, Dave. I think everybody should have that. And I just, I mean, I just want to find out all the information. I mean, that's all I'm doing is asking questions.
We're only going to have two readings tonight, Rob.
Do you want me to have a comment?
Well, if we have two readings tonight, that's great, just not a third. That's all I'm asking.
That's what I just said. We're going to have two readings tonight, all right?
Only thing I'd like to point out to you, councilman, is that the further we delay, that your constituents are going to be paying more than what they would be paying if you passed this tonight. So the sooner you pass this, the sooner they, we can go as long as we want because the utility's over-collecting revenue at this point from the citizens.
But Rob, will you give it to them guys and we can come back here in 48 hours or whatever, we can have a reading. But tonight, we're going to have two readings.
Okay.
That's final.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can I ask a question now?
Yes.
Anyone give me a percentage as to how many residents will increase and how many would decrease?
I don't know the answer to that. It's identical to what it was basically when we were here before.
So technically, some people's rates will go up and some will go down.
No doubt, no doubt.
So I just want to make that clear.
Right, absolutely.
There was another accusation made from Rob. I believe Comcast does-
Comcast and U-verse both. We go simulcast on both of those.
Oh, will you explain that?
I would like to clear up an issue, Madam President, real quick. We do not edit anything. Our regulations say we go gavel to gavel on meetings, such as the city council meeting. Right now, you're the only meeting we go live with. Whenever an issue came up, like it did a meeting or two ago, or is an incident here at the podium, if you remember, President Jones dropped the gavel and said, "We're going to go for a five-minute recess." We did that. We broke away at that time and went with the city seal like we normally do till that issue was cleared up and she came back and the council came back in the room, dropped the gavel, and then we started back on again. We do not edit comments. We will never edit comments. You can get up here and cuss up a storm if you want to. We're not going to edit it. It's going to be in there. So I want to stop that right now, that there's any editing of any meetings that goes on that TV station. It's too important of an issue. It's too important for the public to see it and people are enjoying watching the council meetings now, the ones especially that can't get out and come to the meetings. I just want to clear that issue up, please.
Yeah, there was years that we went without them being-
Many, many years ago, you broadcast them also. Comcast themselves broadcast, brought in all the cables. Back here is a hole in the wall where they used to bring in all the cables. Yes, that goes back a ways.
Yes, it sure does. Since I've been on the council, at least.
But I wanted to clear that issue up completely.
But it is, you would agree, it is very important to have everything-
Absolutely.
And, but Rob, was you in reference to the city or to the Kenan Delabeste down there? You had any, which one were you talking about?
If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them anytime.
Any other person in the audience wish to address the rate?
Uh-oh, here we come.
Ken Dela with Steve Harold Walton. Just wondering if this ordinance includes the $1.5 million bond to purchase the substation from American Electric Power?
That does not need to come back to the council. That bond ordinance was already approved in combination with the original passage of the rate case. It does need to come back before council. That isn't included. I mean, it's, yeah, it's still out there, yes.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on the council?
Voice up.
Question's been called. Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes.
Councilman Willis.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilman Ices.
Yes.
Madam President, I would like to introduce to this council for its second reading, ordinance 14-14, please.
Second.
Ordinance 14-14, an ordinance of the city of Anderson, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of rates and charges for services rendered and new general terms and conditions for electric service by Anderson Municipal Light and Power.
Same as before.
Would you like to, would you like to comment, say your comment?
No, my only comment is I would still like to ask for the three readings. I understand Councilman Dixon's comments. There's no reason to not go forward with three readings tonight. It was very clearly explained to Mr. Jowswak by Mr. Huffer.
Have you talked to him prior to this meeting?
He who, councilwoman?
Jowswak's.
No, I wasn't ever contacted nor did I know he had a concern.
And why didn't you do that, Rob? Why didn't you ask until the council meeting? You know, we could have had this whole issue addressed prior to the council meeting if you'd just have brought it forward.
I'm glad you asked that question, Donna. It was, today's Thursday, I think I found out about this rate discrepancy on Monday and then it took me some time to research it. I mean, I had to look through the ordinance. There's 50 pages there and it's written in legal speak. And then I noticed there were some things missing, like the State Board of Accounts at the IURC, they addressed. And, you know, there has been some laws broken when it comes to utility money, so that was my concern, is why were the laws being broken and had the IURC discussed it?
Madam President.
Yeah.
We made an accusation. I want you to back that up with fact. You got an attorney you can call?
Actually, I don't need to have, I've got the State Board of Accounts audit right here and the laws we're speaking of, Art, I know you weren't here at that time, but they're clearly listed here and I'll read them to you if you give me a second to go through this audit and I'll find the laws for you.
We're in the middle of voting on this ordinance.
We can have Kyle come up. I mean, as an attorney, I mean-
Art, I mean, I don't know how many more times we can explain this to Mr. Jowswak. I've done it. Controller Fenwick has done it. John Skomp has done it. I think it's a waste of this council's time to go back through this. I think everybody on the council is well aware of this discussion around the State Board of Accounts report. Has nothing to do with the electric rate case. We've been down through the IURC, rather than calling it a discrepancy, which I don't know where that comes from, I would call this a windfall for the residents of the city. I mean, again, we've held the line on expenses and the sooner that this council passes it, the sooner that residents get to start seeing a savings. So I would leave it at that and I would ask that at least it be brought to a vote for third reading and if folks decide that they don't want to implement the rate decrease today, then we'll at least know that.
Madam President.
But back to the IC law, the IC code law, Indiana law, and Kyle's an attorney, it's 8-1538. It's in the State Board of Accounts, it's listed in the ordinance and it's listed in the paper that I provided tonight. Now, I'm just asking for, just to hold off on three reads, if you have to do it in a couple days or three days, I would like just a little more time to look at and some clarification because you did vote on a 7.8% electric rate increase and now we're talking about a .25% decrease. So I just want to find out what the overall increase or decrease is.
Made your point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And President.
Where are we at in the vote?
I've already said it's only going to have two readings.
Where are we at in the voting?
That's final. We can move on.
Passed it on the first reading, but you have not voted on the second reading. I'll call for the vote on the second.
Councilman Bibbs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When you say that the taxpayers are going to start saving, that is not exactly true. Some people's will go up.
I'm assuming that everyone who pays a utility bill in this city is a taxpayer in one way, shape or form. They either own a business, they own a residence, they are in some way impacted. And so, yes, so the IURC has mandated, as we've talked about before, us to do a cost of service study. We were successful in going down and convincing the IURC to only go to 50%. They didn't force us to go to 100%, which would have been a pretty big increase for some residents. I think we've done, and I would just say, you know, again, I don't know where Rob is coming from tonight or Councilman Dixon, why you're concerned about passing this on three readings. This council's already passed this twice at a increase. We're back for a decrease. We've had a public hearing on this and action has been taken. I don't, I'm lost as to why we wouldn't do this tonight, but I leave that to the council.
Madam President.
Yes.
It might be a decrease for some, but it's going to be an increase for others.
That's always been.
I understand that, but let's state it exactly like it is and not try to sugarcoat it. The comment was said that the sooner we pass this, the taxpayers in Anderson will receive benefit. But that's true for some, but that's not true for others. Some people's will go up.
We didn't pick the winners and losers here, Ty. We were, we were, we were forced to do it. Nobody said anything different. Every single thing that we've talked about tonight is said. Depending on where you are, what you pay, you may get a slight increase, you may get a slight decrease.
Okay, but it's better to stay there.
But overall, we're going to collect less money. I've said it three times, I think.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm just making sure that the citizens understand.
Sure.
The mayor.
You know, I-
Go ahead, Mr. Dixon.
You know, I see, it seems that Kyle seems to be a little humiliated when he has a problem repeating itself. And if that's in terms of laying discipline towards me as or to Rob over here, I've said that I'm going to give it two readings tonight and you can come back within 48 hours and have a third reading. I don't need to be reminded of my responsibility. I'm well aware, I've been here 24 years. I know what my responsibility is and I don't appreciate you talking to me in that sense. I would get you straight, too. Let's move on.
Councilman Dixon, and I didn't-
The mayor, please.
Take the remarks and-
You don't talk to me any kind of way.
At that light at all. I didn't take them from the audience that way.
Hey, you don't have to, but I'm expressing myself, okay? You speak for you, okay?
I do want to clarify something. I mean, they brought up the State Board of Accounts this evening and that's been terribly mischaracterized, I don't know for what reason. The State Board of Accounts report was the one that was issued in 2013. That's when the evaluation occurred. The evaluation was over the 2012 budget. So it just follows. After the 2012 budget was complete, then there's an evaluation. And that's what they evaluated. The 2012 budget was actually put together and passed in 2011. So we're going back three years. So what he's talking about is the work that was done in 2011 executed in 2012 as far as the budget goes and then the review in 2013. Now, that will repeat itself again as far as the review process in 2014, this year, at the end of this year, then they'll review the 2013 spending because they are a year behind. You have to complete that budget cycle before they can have a review.
Thank you, mayor.
And keep in mind, communication, best thing in the world. You learn how to talk to people when you come forward with a presentation.
We're now into, if you want to go forward, Papella.
The question's already been called for the second reading.
Who called for the question?
Point of order, point of order. You've not asked the audience if they have any questions. You went directly, you were letting Mr., you were address it and no one else has been asked to comment.
I missed that. I thought somebody called the question.
Has a question been called on the second reading?
Okay.
Well, we need a question then.
I'll call for a question.
Second.
Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
No.
Councilman Willis.
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain.
Yes.
Councilman Newman.
Yes.
Councilman Dixon.
No.
Councilman Ices.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Davis. Yes. Go ahead and do your suspension.
Madam President, I'd like to introduce to this council to suspend the rules for ordinance 14-14 for a third reading, please. Second.
Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
No.
Councilman Willis.
There's no reason to go any further.
Go ahead and do the roll. You want me to anyway?
No.
Councilman Willis. Councilman Chamberlain.
Point of order, point of order.
No, no, no.
Our rules clearly stay.
As soon as you get a no.
It stops right there.
That's right.
I'm sorry about that.
Madam President, Pro Tem, I would like to introduce the ordinance 1914 for its first reading, please.
Second.
Ordinance 1913, an ordinance establishing zoning for property annexed into the city of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Madam President, members of the council, good evening again.
Madam President, members of the council, good evening again. Before you this evening, sorry, let me get my glasses. I do have an addition to your packets, members. And I apologize. Go ahead and skip. Jody, would you skip to the third? There you go. This is the 67 acres on the south side of town, 6700 Columbus Avenue. And what I'm asking is for tonight this to be Zoned B1. And what you can probably see on your bigger map that's included, which is the, can you go back one for me, Jody? I'm sorry. Over to the west in the upper corner there, that's the Madison Park Church of God. That's Zoned B1. And so, we're continuing. It's contiguous, and this new parcel, go now to the next slide, which is this 67.85 acres, will also be B1 for business. And Mr. Alexander and Mr. Clemens are here, and they can address any questions you may have.
Any question for any member of the council?
Did we have someone up here a couple months ago talking about that area?
Yes, sir. That was, at the time, that was the annexation portion. Now, it's coming back to the council. It went through the Plan Commission for the actual zoning, and then once it passes the Plan Commission, it comes back to you for the zoning. So that's the final step.
Was any remonstration done?
As far as that goes, there were folks here, remonstrators, but it was outside issues that we, as bodies, couldn't address. So it's some outside issues.
So is there any remonstrators on this?
I don't know. There may be.
Were they informed?
Yes, sir. It was published in the paper, and everyone within 300 feet of the property, well, the council's always published, but the Plan Commission, they were made aware of it.
Yes, Jerry Alexander. I live at 311 Edgewood Place East, here in Anderson.
Would you like to address this, please?
We, as a development company, PACT Development, is obviously interested in seeing this ordinance pass for, you know, future potential for investment. We have had a number of people that's made some inquiries over the years, and we have negotiated access to water and sanitary with Madison Park, and we obviously can't hook to that until we're in the city, and we've now been annexed into the city, and now we're requesting this B1 zoning so that we can, we can at least market the property for potential investors.
Any question for any member of the council?
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Jerry, there was a young man from the sports center, which is now closed, with this gymnastics facility that he had at the sports center. Is he still interested in possibly doing that particular business on this parcel?
The last report that we have is he has, is exploring other options. He had had some financial issues with the, with the bank, and some, there's just a number of things that's, that's not fit together yet for him. We've been told that there is the potential that he might circle back to us, but at this point, we would have to say that that's probably not necessarily dead, but not likely in the immediate future.
So was that, I mean, was the purpose of doing this for that particular business at the time?
Yes and no. We had a, we had an interested buyer, which motivated us to move forward because we had an interested buyer. Obviously, we decided to annex the entire parcel for the purpose of future development, and the fact that we couldn't, we couldn't access water and sanitary sewer without being annexed into the city. So that was all what motivated us to move forward, and obviously, you really, it wasn't a marketable piece of property for business purposes until we've done this. And now, we're in a position that should that particular buyer recircle back to us, then, then we've got a property that he can purchase without having to go through all the hoops that was necessary to get, to get to where we finally got to. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Jerry, are you one of the developers?
No, I'm a member of PACT Development, and we, we actually own the property. And at some point, we may be developers, but we're, at this point, we're hoping to sell the property and develop it, but we potentially may develop it at some point.
Well, the guy that was here a couple months ago posed the argument that none of the developers or the investors lived in that vicinity, which you, do you or any of the developers live in that area?
Well, there's no one lives in that area that's being annexed. No one lives, lives in the actual, in the actual 67 acres, there's not a property owner that lives in that property.
Or the person out there, is anyone out there that lives in that area? It's all vague.
They were at the last meeting, Ollie, when we actually annexed it. They were all here.
Yeah, I voted against the annexation because the people came out to me, and they had opposition to having that developers to develop that.
It passed the council last month.
It didn't pass me. I know that. I knew it passed. I'm well aware of it, but I didn't vote for it. That's why I asked.
I don't believe he was here on the last.
That was a special meeting down on the 4-4 vote. That was on that thing down at the Parks Department. That was a special meeting when I wasn't here.
Ah.
I'm correcting you.
Yeah, that was on the job. It was.
Is that right? You had, can you come to the mic?
It was only one issue that I wasn't here. That was about that Parks Department situation.
And the annexation, right? Was done on us at a special meeting, right? Is that true?
I was here on the annexation. No, we didn't have a meeting, a special meeting on the annexation.
Yeah, my name's Raoul Jimenez. I live at 2827 Batula Street, right here in Anderson. I've been a citizen of this city since 1954. And when that man says that nobody lives in that area, is that what you just said?
No, I said no one lives in the 67 acres that, no, there's not any residents that live in the 67 acres.
But how about in front, in front?
Well, I'm sure there's people that live contiguous to it, but there's...
Right. But what's going to happen to them? That's what I want to know. What's going to happen to them?
At a council meeting.
And how many are there?
There was, within 300 feet, there was like 27 different items and mail that we sent. So I would say that there's probably 27.
27. That's 27 people that are not going to be very happy, because their property is going to be taken away from eventually, eventually. There's already been property.
They're speaking in the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The council can't hear you.
There's people that has already been, done away with some of their property out there, if I understand it right.
I don't understand what you mean by that.
Well, I was talking to a lady out there today, okay? She said that they're trying to take everything away from all the properties around there.
Outside of the annexed area, are you talking about?
No, within, within.
Within the annexed area?
Within.
Is there anything on this property?
Is that right?
No.
No, nothing within?
Does anybody understand what he's talking about?
It may be the same guy that come out and talked to me. He claimed that he was being boxed in.
Oh.
He said he was being boxed in. That's what he told me.
Yeah, he was at the meeting, but it was over his drainage, I believe he was being boxed in, right? Anybody remember that?
That's not in the city.
I have a question.
That's not in the city? No. And they're not going to try to annex that? They're not trying to annex that. But that's county as well. That's not the city.
Well, there's still, those people are going to be hurting. Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
When this originally came to us, the developer, which was the gymnastics gentleman, he said that he would incur all the costs associated with taking water and sewer out. If he's no longer involved in this, then who's going to pay the city for those services?
Whoever buys it, probably.
They, obviously, the, anybody that would develop the land, that would be a requirement, since it's been, it's been approved by the council under that, that, yeah, presumption, that we're not going to, to make the city pay for something that you, you voted on that, that says that a developer will pay for it. And that is the absolute intent of any, any developer that would, would purchase property or we develop it, it obviously would, and we're only talking about getting water from one side of the street to the other side of the street, and getting sanitary sewer from, we've already put the taps in. So all we have to do is just go bore underneath the street to get to water, and then go 10 feet and bore under the street to get to the sanitary sewer, connect. So whatever that, our estimates have been $30,000 to do that. So basically, somebody will do that, whoever develops it. If we sell a piece of property, that will be the requirement, that they will have that cost to get it.
Well, it's very disappointing, especially to me, that I voted on the annexation sheerly because that we was going to have some economic development out there, and it was going to be the gymnast business. That's disappointing.
Well, it, it, your disappointment is well taken, but ours was, was a disappointment to us, too, you know? We didn't find out till after the annexation and just prior to the zoning board meeting that happened.
Personally, myself, I noticed the young man hadn't came to the last couple of meetings, and I wondered if something hadn't happened.
Madam President.
Yes.
It was clearly like a package deal that, from my perspective, I don't speak for anyone else, but I voted to give this young man an opportunity to develop that area. And now, you're telling me that it's, he's no longer involved in it.
Well, he was, his intent was to purchase five acres, and we're talking about 67 acres, not...
But we don't know that it's a closed door. From my last contact with the contractor, that there is a possibility that he's coming back, so we don't know.
State your name for that.
Steve Clemens.
Your address, sir, we want to know.
4951 West County Road, 400 South, Muncie, Indiana.
But the individuals that was in opposition to that in the first place, they said this very scenario would take place, that this property would be taken away from those, and those that are struggling would remain struggling. He said this everything would take place here. It's just like, we're taking away their land and giving to the rich.
It's not their land.
Well...
Madam President.
Yes.
May I have a for a moment, please?
Please.
Only comment I would like to make, and I've been in private business for 35 years, is those two gentlemen exclude you and say that Councilman Dixon and myself own the property? I have no jurisdiction for what a bank's going to say, and they clearly stated earlier, unless I misunderstood you, the bank is where the problem's at, it's not with you guys. Is that correct or incorrect?
That's correct. The...
And he's searching out other financial options, too.
So what's happened is the, the bank made a lending decision that didn't fit with what his plan was. And he was, I don't, I don't know all the details, but all we've been told is that the funding was not going to be there, and so he couldn't move forward at this time. And so, obviously, that's, that's where it's, where it's been presented to us.
Madam President.
Yes.
I move that we table this ordinance, please.
There's a motion on the floor that we table the ordinance. There's, is there a second?
A second.
Councilman Papella.
No.
Councilman Bibbs.
Yes.
Councilman Willis.
No.
Councilman Chamberlain. Councilman Newman.
No.
Councilman Dixon.
No. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, see, I want to table it. Yes, I changed my vote, yes.
Councilman Ices.
No.
President Protem Davis. Yes. So, let's have the vote on, on... Well, I need to know, what did, what did you say, Councilman Papella?
I said no, don't table it.
It's not tabled. It passed.
It was six, seven to two, right?
Right.
It's only eight.
Or seven, or six to three.
Six, three.
Right. Six, three, six nos and three.
Five, three. We don't have councilmen.
Oh, that's right.
Madam President, can I suggest that we ask the Economic Development Department to ring in on this and just give his opinion about this debate, because he hasn't had an opportunity?
Let me make one comment first, and I've been trying to wait. When we annexed this in, we were looking at about 67.85 acres, five acres of it for this gymnastic. It was also said that a little over 62-plus acres additional business growth for this community to help alleviate tax burden on the citizens of this community. We annexed that in under that auspice. Now, if we've lost the gymnastics center, that's truly sad. I mean, we've, we've lost another business in town that really wanted to see located there, but we also have the opportunity for our economic development staff to develop additional 62 acres of some other type of business out there. And we've already decided to annex it and bring it into the city. All we're doing at this point is giving it a zoning, and, and I guess I need some clarification. I guess when we annex something, it doesn't carry the zoning that the county had.
That's correct.
So we have to put a zoning for it.
That's correct.
There's nobody living in the 67.85 acres. There's no houses, there's no buildings. It is bare land. All we're doing at this point is giving it a zoning so that that project hopefully would move forward, but many other projects, or another large project, would move forward on this property.
And as you'll recall, thank you, Councilman Ices, as you'll recall, I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Want to make sure I could talk. As you'll recall, when we talked about the annexation issue last year, this was part of the conversation. Why don't we utilize that, that property, the land between exits 222 and 226? And as I shared with you when this issue came up, for the voluntary annexation, that's part of the overall strategy, is to utilize not only this land, but other land adjacent to this property as we move towards the east, towards State Route 109. There's a tremendous business opportunity there that we have yet to tap as a city, and we need to do that. This is part of doing that. So I would ask for you to, to go ahead and, and rezone, please.
The other thing I'd like to add to that is, because sometimes I've been mentioning somebody's taking property from someone, I mean, I'm totally lost there. No one's losing any property. Nobody's losing their home, nobody's losing, nobody's...
I think he retracted that.
Who said he was taking property?
This gentleman here, I believe, said that.
Mr. Wick, was it specified in the paper that what type of zoning, were the residents of that area told what type of zoning that he was going to request from the council?
I believe that that's communicated not only at this meeting, but at the Plan Commission meeting, and I think that the building commissioner can attest to that.
Well, I'm interested what the public was made aware of, not what the zoning commissioner...
But all of, all of those adjacent property owners are required to be notified by certified mail, correct? Yes. So they, they were notified that there was a zoning change that was being considered by the Plan Commission and then by the, by the city council. So all of those property owners were notified in, in writing via U.S. mail, certified U.S. mail. That's required by statute.
Well, we're not going to get no three reading. Well, you can't, three reads.
You can't do three.
Anyway, and I'm opposed, and we're going to try to get those people here next meeting.
Anyone in the audience?
Adelate to their opinion.
I'm sorry. Anyone in the audience would like to address this issue? If not, a...
Call for the question.
Question been called. That'll be the first reading, right?
Right.
Yes. Okay, I've got notes going crazy here. Councilman Papella.
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs.
No.
Councilman Willis.
Yes.
Madam President Protem, I'd like to introduce ordinance nineteen fourteen for a second reading, please.
Second.
Ordinance nineteen fourteen, an ordinance establishing zoning for property annexed to the city of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Frank, anybody, any council member have anything else to say? If not, I'll entertain a question.
Call for the question.
Question been called. Pete, did you want to address the council?
No.
Oh. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
No.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
No.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protem Davis?
No.
We will have ordinance twenty dash fourteen, please. You tell I'm rusty.
I'm trying to figure out when she's going to get done there. I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty fourteen for its first reading. Second.
Ordinance twenty dash fourteen, an ordinance establishing zoning for property annexed into the city of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Frank Owens.
Madam President, members of the council, thank you once again. This evening, I present to you petition twenty dash fourteen, which is twenty-nine-hundred block of Range Line Road. It is approximately forty acres of property that we're asking for your permission to zone as I-1 property. It's part of a larger piece of property, which is roughly two-hundred-and-sixty-five acres, I believe.
Thank you.
It's being developed for, I passed around a smaller, it's a blow-up of the actual area that's being asked for zoning consideration. Currently, there's going to be an office building, as you can see to the west there. That's the current operating IOU.
IUO.
IUO, yeah, IUO, okay. It's all the vowels. It's the operating engineers, I know that.
There's no A.
There's no A, yeah. They're across the street, and they're going to plan an office building, I believe, in part of the property. But we do have Mr. Jonathan Cook and Mr. Virgil Cook here, and they can answer any of your questions about the further development of the property.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Jonathan Cook, over here representing Alda Corporation.
And what's your address?
Seven twenty-one Central Way, Anderson, Indiana.
Thank you. Would you like to explain your zoning?
Sure. As Mr. Owens has already alluded to, the IUOE is purchasing this land. Their real main interest right now, or primary interest right now, is to make a five-acre development of a twenty-to-thirty thousand square foot facility, mainly to house their administrative staff. So it's administrative office building to supplement their school that they have that's to the west, just across the street, along Range Line and Mounds Road there. The rest of it is still going to be farmed, but the reason that we're requesting I-1 is the flexibility for the remainder of the tract of land, in case they do want to develop anything. They are not planning any future development. They want the extra land to make sure nobody else buys them, want to control that area. But currently, it's the five acres that they want to develop this year, if possible.
Any question from any members of the council?
President Protem.
Yes.
Mr. Cook, does Alda Corporation also own the property south of the railroad tracks?
Yes, I do.
How many, how much land is that?
Hard to pinpoint it. It's a hundred-and-fifty-plus acres. It's a large, large block. Yeah, two sixty-five total, that's forty taken out.
Any other questions from any member of the council?
Frank?
It's in the county, so...
Anyone in the audience?
I got Frank here, him up here.
Okay.
Will you get your pointer out and walk that area and tell me what the surrounding areas, what are they zoned?
Oh, you have it in your packet, council?
Yeah, but I want to see it up there.
Sure.
Where's that go get his pointer? I'm sure that's what he's doing.
I have an app for that. Damn map's going to end tomorrow.
Listen, you can, not looking up there.
Where is that old Union Hall at, out there?
The street.
It's across the street, right here, isn't it?
Okay, that was the old UAW, right there, six sixty-two.
Okay, and going east on Mound Road is...
This is Mounds Road, right here.
Uh, and going east...
And over here's the Juvenile Center and all that property, right there.
Right.
What is it?
And that's all zoned.
Yeah.
R-four. And over here, this is zoned, on this side, R-three.
This is in my district.
Yeah, this is R-three, all here. And then over here, right edge, is R-three.
Yours, too.
And then this is B-three.
Okay.
And then R-three down here, and then this is all counting, so...
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at, where is the benefit of rezoning it to I-1?
Because it allows them flexibility, because they're going to develop this five acres here, it gives them flexibility for the building that they're wanting to do, on the setbacks and the height of the building on I-1. And if they want, let's say in the future, they're going to keep this whole property. So if they just develop this five acres here, let's say, my pointer's going dead.
I was going to say...
Anna's been playing on my pointer, I think. Okay, if they just develop this portion, let's say, and we replat at a future time, and I don't know, that might be a possibility. If we were to replat, let's say, just that five acres, then we might come back and rezone the other portion, we don't know. They may want to keep it all I-1 for future office space, or whatever.
Okay, draw a perimeter of the, that you want I-1.
Right. Are you a little shaky?
Yeah, I know, it's not very good.
Okay, so if...
That's my good hand.
So if they decide to put an I-1 industrial, they decide to put a factory in there?
They can't put a factory in.
They can't put a factory in it.
They'd have to go to I-two or I-three.
So I-1 don't include, is what I'm saying?
No.
It don't, okay, all right. So you didn't have any remonstration, any opposition to this?
Absolutely not.
For me, no?
Yep, and they did the same procedure, followed through, yep.
Any other question from any member of the council?
Call for the question.
I haven't asked the audience yet. Anyone in the audience? If not, the question's been called.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protem Davis?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash fourteen been given its first reading.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to bring ordinance twenty fourteen to this council for its second reading. Second.
Ordinance twenty dash fourteen, an ordinance establishing zoning for property annexed into the city of Anderson as herein particularly described.
Frank Owens, it's your show.
It is, seems to be. Madam President, thank you. Just ask if there's any questions and ask for your support.
Other questions?
Call for the question.
Question been called.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protem Davis?
Yes.
Twenty dash fourteen has been given its second reading.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
President Davis?
Yes.
I'd like to give ordinance twenty-three fourteen first reading.
Second.
Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing a loan of funds from the Water Pollution Control Reserve Fund to the Water Utility Fund.
Madam President, members of the council, good evening. With this ordinance, we're requesting a loan from Water Pollution Control to the Water Utility in the amount of one million, two-hundred thousand. This is a similar number to what was presented earlier this year, when we were talking about the water rate increase and the expected deficit that our Water Utility will experience until the first and the second phase of the increase are implemented. Of that one point two million, seven hundred thousand of it is extending the loan that we borrowed in December, which is due at the end of this month. So it's really providing an additional five hundred thousand of borrowing capacity for the utility.
Anybody, any question from a council member?
You're going to pay that back, aren't you?
We're absolutely wanting to pay that back as quickly as possible, but we don't know the timeframe. We've asked for up to eighteen months, and I would request a suspension of the rules in three readings of this. This money is needed at the Water Utility this month.
Anyone in the audience wish to address this issue? Any council member have a question?
Call for the question.
Question been called.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protem Davis?
Yes.
Twenty-three fourteen has passed its first reading.
President Davis?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce twenty-three fourteen for a second reading.
Second.
Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing a loan of funds from the Water Pollution Control Reserve Fund to the Water Utility Fund.
Any questions from the council? Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called.
Oops, Tom, I don't track them. Go ahead, Ken.
Go.
You can do it after suspension.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protem Davis?
Yes.
Now, would you like to ask your question?
I would, thank you, Madam President. Ken Dillon, esteemed Harold Wilton. Mr. Fenwick, we talked earlier, and the application has not been submitted to the IURC as of today. Any idea when that will be submitted for the rate increase, and how long will that take to get approved?
We did talk about that, and I'd like to ask John Scamp to come up and address that.
Yes, after the, John Scamp with Crowe Horwath. After the council meeting, we did need to update our financial data, we got all that done. We were a little slow at Crowe, getting some of the testimony put together, that type of stuff, we've got all that done. Hope to file it next week with the commission and be moving forward, so we have, be ready to move forward with that, we've got all the updated information, so...
There's a suspension on the floor. Any other questions from any member of the council?
Point of order, it hasn't been introduced, it has not been introduced for its third and final reading.
We haven't introduced it.
Passed the suspension.
We just passed suspension.
You haven't introduced it for the third reading.
I rusty or what?
It's okay, you haven't introduced it for the third reading.
You're up.
Just trying to...
No. Third reading. President Davis?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen for its third and final reading.
Second.
Ordinance twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance authorizing a loan of funds from the Water Pollution Control Reserve Fund to the Water Utility Fund.
Okay, any question?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman, I have one question here. The, on this bond issue that's due at the end of the month?
Mm-hmm.
Repay, or whatever, what's the percentage difference, if any?
I'm not sure I understand your question. We say the percentage difference between...
One that's due now is compared to the new one you're getting.
In terms of interest rate, or, okay, well, the new one that we've asked for with this, as part of the total water package, if you will, we won't be able to issue that until we've gotten the order, and that'll be brought back before council, before we have the ability to issue those bonds. So the new ones have not been issued and probably won't be issued until sometime next year at the earliest, or maybe even...
Excuse me, Mr. Fenwick, he's talking about the loan that's due?
Oh.
There'd be no interest.
I beg your pardon, so, the interest rate? Yeah.
There'd be no interest.
There's no interest rate. It's, I thought you were talking about the bond, so...
Borrowing it from ourselves.
There's no interest rate on this, and there's no interest rate on the loan that we have outstanding, the seven hundred thousand. My apologies.
I have a question, President. So we're borrowing this money from ourselves, but we haven't been approved from IURC. So what's the chances of that not happening? I mean, is that...
We, John Scamp again, when we took the electric utility and the order we just received from the commission, we had a similar problem with the electric and had to borrow some money from the sewer, and the commission did allow us to amortize it over a two-year period and repay it. So we're hoping for consistency when we go down there and they'll, the same type treatment. But as far as what our expectations are, we expect the commission to treat it as they did on the electric, and so...
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a...
Call for the question.
Question been called.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protem Davis?
Yes.
Twenty-three fourteen has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have introductions of resolutions.
Madam President Protem?
Yes.
I'd like to have resolution eleven dash fourteen being given its reading.
Second.
Where's my resolution? Yeah, I need one. Where's my resolution?
Here.
I don't have eleven.
I'd give you my copy.
Resolution eleven dash fourteen, thank you. A resolution certifying the program plan, strategy and operation of the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund Board for the city of Anderson, Indiana. Michael Friskorn.
Yes. Councilmembers, we'd ask that you would pass the resolution. This is a resolution that's done every year. The plan has not changed since last year, when this council approved the plan. I believe the plan has been distributed to everyone. If anyone has any questions?
It's never happened. Any question from any member of the council? Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protem Davis?
Yes.
Resolution eleven dash fourteen has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor.
Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Friskorn.
Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protam Davis?
Yes. 2314 has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor.
Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Friskorn.
Yes.
You're welcome, Councilman Willis.
Madam President?
Yes.
Your title, Michael.
Deputy Director.
I'd like to introduce City Resolution 12-14, please.
Second.
Resolution 12-14, a preliminary declaratory resolution fixing a date, time, and place for a public hearing thereon for Barber Manufacturing Company Incorporated. You sure don't look like Ashley Hopper.
If you want, she can, you know...
Go ahead.
I serve at the pleasure of the council, so...
Oh, okay.
In this case, we had asked that this council set this abatement for a preliminary hearing for July 10th, which is the next council meeting. And if you have any questions about this particular abatement, it's to be a three-year standard abatement for a piece of equipment that they're purchasing, which will be about $200,000. And if you have any questions?
Do they have anybody here?
They do.
Yes. Jack Barber is here. Can answer any questions.
One thing we want to point out, I know he's going to point out, is this is year 120 for Barber Manufacturing and continuous production. Yeah. All right. I've always been there, anyway. I can already see. You've been there all that time? Well, I've been there since I...well, Madam President, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak. Yeah, we are in 120 years of business, and we're purchasing new equipment. You know, if you're 120 years old, you have a lot of old machines. We've had them for a long time. This new machine we're purchasing will triple our production, so it's going to help us a lot. So just on one machine, so we're just thankful to be here and for you guys to even hear this case for us, so thank you.
Around a long time. Are you going to add any employees with this, or do you know of...
This piece of equipment will not add any additional jobs, no.
But it would keep employees.
Absolutely.
Any question from the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Barber, will this go on the 1/19th or the one on MLK?
MLK, 303 MLK Boulevard. On MLK.
What that used to be 50 years ago?
Reginald Pontiac.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've heard the...we have a...where we store some production pieces is an old...is where they used to wash the cars and actually service the cars, so the water slopes down to a drain that we have to fight sometimes, and some things fall down, they roll to the drain all the time, we have to move, so...but I'm well aware that it's the Pontiac, old Russ Reginald Pontiac building.
That goes back a long way, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Madam President?
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience?
Madam President?
Yes.
Michael, this hearing declaration resolution, is this for an abatement on the equipment, or...
This is for a partial three-year tax payment on the equipment.
That wasn't clear there. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protam Davis?
Yes. 2314 has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor.
President Davis?
Yes.
Introduce Resolution 1314.
Second.
Resolution 1314, a resolution designating and certifying officer of the City of Anderson as required for the environmental review process pursuant to federal regulations.
Council President, members of the council, last piece of business for this evening. This is a resolution. Not the last piece, but close to the last piece of business. This particular resolution is one that we pass each year, as required by statute. This simply certifies that Floyd Edwards will act as the certifying officer for any environmental issues that might come up with that business.
Is he here?
He is not here, could not be here tonight.
We're going to dump him in Louise.
Any other...
Any questions?
I'm sorry. Any other councilmember have a question? Anyone in the audience?
Call for the question.
Question been called. Councilman Papella?
Yes.
Councilman Bibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Yes.
Councilman Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilman Newman?
Yes.
Councilman Dixon?
Yes.
Councilman Ices?
Yes.
President Protam Davis?
Yes. 2314 has passed the Anderson City Council and waits on the signature of the mayor.
Madam President? May I make a motion to adjourn?
We have one...we have a board of works chairman.
May I please...
Not on this. Meeting adjourned. We voted.
Thank you, council, just for 30 seconds. It's very...I know, and trying to coordinate everybody's schedule, it's very cumbersome sometimes, and since everybody's here, I'd like to ask council if we could go ahead and set the meeting per Mr. Dixon's request for either Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
June 17th or June 18th is the date I was giving? We can't do it to 18th.
I'm going to do it 17th. The 17th is a Tuesday, and is it typically at 5:00 P.M.?
The special meetings typically are.
Some councilmembers have a meeting with Chief Crenshaw that evening at 5:00.
On the 17th?
Yes. I'm sure we could move that.
The 18th, we're having a Mounds Lake meeting.
Maybe 6:00 or 6:30 on the 17th.
You can do it on...
Or we could do it at 5:00.
6 o'clock ought to be...
If you want to do it at 5:00.
6.
How are we going to get over there?
I have a meeting with...no, I'm talking about the 17th, Tuesday, the 17th, after those of us that are meeting with Chief Crenshaw.
Oh. So how long you guys think that's going to last?
I hope no longer than an hour, as Councilman Dixon is recommending.
Yeah, we can bring him in here, and we can roll off one into the other one.
Madam President, I...
It'll only be for what it's called for, so you're just saying...
What I'm talking about is, we can use the chambers to meet with the chief.
I just...I was just informed there's a park board meeting Tuesday night at 4:30. I did not know that, apologize. Could we do it at 5:30? Council has priority for the council chambers. Thank you.
They've kicked out many...
And I know the chief, so maybe we can work with him on...
What's wrong with Monday? Is it...
I can't make Monday.
I can't make Monday either, for sure.
Well, plus you have to get 48 hours. Oh, Lord. Let's have it then at what time?
6 o'clock Tuesday night. Let's do 6 o'clock Tuesday. Is that okay with everyone?
Let me check my calendar.
You good?
Yes, because I'm not going to be here, so my deputy will have to do it.
Who's meeting the chief?
We're getting minds shuffled around. It's consensus then at 6 o'clock Tuesday? 6:00 P.M. Tuesday, the 17th? Advertised tomorrow. 48 hours.
Thank you very much, council. I appreciate you sticking around for that.
I would like to request that you have nothing but the one ordinance on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's don't fill it up with a lot of this other stuff. Well, not if you called it a special meeting, it can only be...
You can only put...we've got to discuss here what we're going to have on that.
Oh, are you? I'm sorry.
We ain't going to have it.
I only heard part of it.
We only got one issue.
And that's the rate increase.
And that's ordinance 14-14?
That's all we'll hear on the 7th.
That's all we hear.
On the 17th, at 6:00 P.M.
And if anybody has any questions, please let me know, and I'll answer.
Yeah, 14.
What time is it?
6 o'clock, the 17th.
Tuesday, the 17th.
You remind me.
I'll entertain a motion.
I already made it, adjourned.
Second.
Lisa, Lisa, you good?
8:35.
Hey, y'all make sure that my request back to school parade be on that park board agenda for...
Okay, council.
Who doesn't?